What's that?
You want to lob it over there?
Well, I don't know. Thank you, City Manager, for joining us.
I'm Paul Jett, Mayor.
We will call the meeting order at one minute after seven. Would you call the roll, please? Councilmembers Powers, here at Singleton, Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Tean.
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by the flag salute, which will be led by Councilman Cruz.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Clerk please read the video statement?
This meeting, excuse me, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address councils should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? Then we will go to presentations.
Okay, first, tonight is our Finance Department regarding special assessments.
Mayor, let me just make an introductory comment on two of the items we have under presentations. Both of these are related to items that are on the consent calendar, and we thought it would be a good idea to educate the council as well as the community about some of these items in a little more detail than we normally go through them.
I appreciate that. Do you want to give us the number of the consent items that you're referring to?
Sure. For the special assessments, there's a number of items on here relating to assessment districts. We have number three, four, and five. And then the ACES program is the next presentation, and that's number nine on the consent calendar.
Okay, that's very helpful, because it's a long consent calendar.
Sure.
All right, thank you for that. Michelle? Shall we move on to the other presentation? City Clerk, was that your suggestion to do? Does that suit you, Armando?
I'm ready.
Okay, we'll give them a chance to work out their technical difficulties, and we'll go to the second item on presentation. Parks and Recs Department, partnerships, after-school education and safety, AES program, Meals on Wheels program. Armando, please.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight our presentation's going to be on partnerships that the city has with outside agencies. The first present, first partnership that we're going to discuss is the after-school's education and safety program, known as ACES. The second partnership will be the partnership that we have with the Asian Community Center of Sacramento, known as Meals on Wheels, or M-O-W. Everybody loves kids, right? So, ACES is a great program for us to be partnered with, with the, with the school district. We partner with the Galt Elementary School District in this program, and the ACES program is a result of Prop. 49 funds, which are used to establish local after-school programs. These programs are created through partnerships between schools and local agencies, in this case, the Galt Elementary School District and the Galt Parks and Rec Department. And what we do is we try to provide literacy, academic, and safe constructive alternatives for students K through eight. Currently, we have three locations for the ACES program. We have it at Greer Elementary, which is K through sixth, Valley Oaks, K through sixth, and McCaffrey Middle School, which is seventh and eighth grades. At each site, there's a school district employee which serves at our site supervisor, and depending on the site and the number of kids, the site director will supervise three to five Parks and Rec workers. Each Parks and Rec worker will be responsible for supervising up to 20 kids per staff member. The activities include, included in the ACES program are 60 minutes of homework and tutoring, 30 minutes of recess, and 50 minutes of enrichment activities, including movies, free play, Xbox, and et cetera. That's pretty much a day with ACES. And, you know, with the partnership between the city and the school district, it's great as the kid is showing you its thumbs up. I mean, kids are, scores are improving. It's a great program to have. The second partnership that we have is our senior nutrition program, Meals on Wheels. And this is done with the, the, excuse me, sorry, lost my place, the Asian Community Center of Sacramento. The Meals on Wheels Association of Sacramento is the oldest, largest organization representing local community-based senior nutrition programs. The local M-O-W member for the Sacramento Valley is the Asian Community Center, known as ACC of Sacramento. The ACC is a not-for-profit, tax-exempt organization whose mission is to promote the general welfare and enhance the quality of life for older adults. The ACC and the City of Galt have partnered to provide the Meals on Wheels program. The M-O-W is designed to improve or maintain the physical, social, and psychological well-being of the elderly in the City of Galt. The program is housed and run through the Chabola Center and staffed by one paid Parks and Rec employee, and uses three to five volunteers to help run the program. The M-O-W program provides over 12,000 meals annually to our seniors and the Chabola Center, at the Chabola Center, and delivered meals to seniors' homes who are homebound. And in some cases, this is the only socialization that they have. So, you know, they check on them, make sure they're okay. And with the City of Galt, Meals on Wheels by ACNC, again, another great program that we partner with, something that we can't do by ourselves, but helping each other, we're able to, to help our citizens here in Galt from young to old. So, that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Armando, is, how can people find out how to sign up for Meals on Wheels?
If they can contact the Parks and Rec office, we can provide them all the information. And, and again, if they're homebound, we're able to deliver meals. If not, they're welcome to come here and socialize with the 40 to 50 people that we have there. It's great. I love walking in there and seeing all of them talking and having a great time, and it continues out to the parking lot when they're out there 15 or 20 minutes afterwards. So...
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any comments or questions about any of these programs?
I have a comment. It's been a very successful merge between the agencies and the associations, and it's very successful. I hear positive comments all the time, so, thanks.
We're really lucky to live in a community where the city is willing to work with other organizations, you know, talking to people from nearby cities. They don't have that cooperation that, that we do with other organizations.
Okay, I think that is something that we can be proud of in our community, the way that we are willing to work together. Okay, if there aren't any other questions or comments, we're gonna thank Armando first and move on to the next presentation. We'll see, she says.
We can just proceed with the presentation without the PowerPoint. Can't get that working. That'd be fine.
Do you want to bring the computer over here? Will that help?
Good night.
Connected in.
Okay. Shall we give up? Okay. We'll just go back to the old-fashioned way. Make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The presentation tonight is about special assessments and how the City of Galt uses these to finance public improvements. In 1978, Californians enacted Proposition 13, which limited the ability of local public agencies to increase property taxes based on a property's assessed value. Since that time, assessment districts, which have been in existence since the early 1900s, have been used on a widespread basis as an alternative method for financing public improvements. Currently, about one in three properties in the state of California is in an assessment district, and 45% of the properties in the City of Galt are part of an assessment district. So, why do cities form these types of districts? These districts provide funding for projects when other sources of funds are unavailable. For instance, to install infrastructure, such as water and sewer for new development, or older areas of town to provide new public improvements. An assessment district is created by a sponsoring local government, such as a city or county. The procedure for forming a district begins with a petition signed by owners of the property who want the public improvements. The proposed district will include all properties that will directly benefit from the improvements to be constructed. A public hearing is held, at which time property owners have the opportunity to protest. Once it's approved, the property owners have the opportunity to prepay the assessment. After the cash payment period is over, a special assessment lien is recorded against each property within the district, and subsequently, each year, the parcels will pay their, excuse me, I'm sorry. Subsequently, the parcels will then pay their total assessment through the annual tax levy with the County of Sacramento. The property owners have the right to prepay the remaining balance of any assessment at any time, including applicable prepayment fees. As larger parcels are split and developed, the assessment is allocated to the subdivided parcels proportionately. By law, the assessment cannot be directly based on the value of the property. Instead, the assessments are based on the mathematical formulas that take into account how much each property will benefit from the installation of the improvements. Information such as zoning is also taken into account. Each parcel in the assessment district becomes responsible for a fixed percentage of the total district debt, and pays that portion of the principal and interest due on the bonds each year. Bond issues are normally structured so that the amount of the annual installment remains relatively level. So, what is the City of Galt's role in all of this? As mentioned previously, the City sponsors the district, coordinates the creation of the district, and works with the appropriate parties to sell bonds. Once the bonds are sold, the City will oversee construction of the improvements, using the construction funds as outlined in the bond documents. The City is responsible for levying the assessments, collecting the funds, and remitting the payments to the bond trustee. The City of Galt uses a consultant currently NBS Government Finance Group to administer each district. This includes assistance in calculating and placing the levis, delinquency collection, annual reporting, and continuing disclosure reporting. During the bond issue, the district contracts with the trustee bank, currently Bank of New York, to hold, invest, and disperse the bond funds. The bond funds will include construction funds until the projects are completed, and a bond fund, a reserve fund, generally about 10% of the bond issued, which is held as a cushion against delinquencies. The trustee also receives and processes the debt service payments to the bondholders. Finally, we contacted a foreclosure attorney. Although they might vary in detail, most bond covenants require that the City strip delinquent levis meeting certain criteria and proceed with delinquency collections, including foreclosure, in a shorter timeframe than the county follows, in order to protect the investments of the bondholders. As part of this process, the Finance Department does have several items on the agenda tonight to have council authorize the stripping of delinquent parcels from the county tax rolls and proceed with delinquency collection. Over the past several years, with the troubled economy, the City has expanded our delinquency process, offering property owners additional time between the parcel being stripped and implementation of the foreclosure process. We now send a final notice through the district administrator, giving property owners an additional 30 to 60 days to pay without incurring additional legal fees. This has proven successful, and we have noted a fair amount of collections during this time. The City of Galt currently has three active special assessment districts. These districts were formed by the property owners, primarily developers at the time, to finance the construction of infrastructure required for residential development. 1988-1 Community Facilities District was formed to construct sewage facilities, storm drainage, street and road improvements and construction, street lighting as necessary, and water storage facilities in the northeast area of the City of Galt. The assessments range from $113 to $678 per parcel, with an average levy of $308 per year. These bonds will mature in 2017. The 1988-2 Assessment District was formed to finance the acquisition of public improvements, including storm sewer, water distribution, sanitary sewer, lift station facilities and street improvements. The seven properties in this small district are located south of Bosau Road, close to the golf course. These assessments range from $1,500 to $115,000 per year, and vary greatly due to parcel size. These bonds mature in 2014. Finally, the 1991 dash, I'm sorry, 1999-1 Reassessment District was formed in 1999 to refinance three previous districts. The refinance was completed to reduce the interest rates on the three districts and shorten the terms of some of the districts. Two of the districts have since been paid off, however, the original 1992-1 district remains. The district was formed to finance construction of a 3 million gallon water storage tank and booster pump, the acquisition of a storage tank and pump station site, the construction of a sewer line, 9,800 lineal feet of 12-inch water main, and all pump filtration units and connectors for the creek side well. This district is located south of Melody Lane, between First Street and Highway 99, and these assessments range from $185 to $949 per year, with an average of $595 per resident. And this district will mature in 2024. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I had maps and so forth on my presentation, but...
Council, any, any questions? And are, are those locations available through the City Clerk's office if the public wishes to see them?
They are. They're part of our budget process, but we can certainly make a copy of the presentation available as well. We actually had some copies, and I don't think we had sufficient, but we can certainly have copies available and provide them to the Clerk's office. So, Michelle added much more information as what's on the PowerPoint presentation, but I think it would still be a useful resource for our community.
Okay. So, we do have those available for the public. Did you want one right now? I see you waving your hand at me, or can you wait till?
Can I make a save?
Sure, come on up. I'm assuming it has to do with this item or this presentation? Okay.
I believe it does.
Go for it, we'll find out.
Is this the same 1992-1, is that the same Melrose for the school? Is that incorporated into that?
No, this doesn't include anything for the school. These are all for city infrastructure, yeah.
Well, I was just curious, because I called it up today on that one. That's a 31-year bond. I didn't know they could even rent 31 years. Can anybody help with that?
I'm not familiar with actual financing for the school district. They, there is a separate one for the JPA for the school district, but I'm not, that's it. Right. And that's actually administered through the school district, not through the City of Galt, and I'm not familiar with what their structure is like, so I would...
I was curious, because I didn't know that they had 31-year bonds. So, that means I'm gonna pay $7,000 for 30 years?
I think you'll have to contact them, because we can't help you on that. Sorry, we couldn't answer that question. Okay, anything else?
I have a question.
Okay.
Because I, I need a little bit better of a visual. Do we do this every year to properties?
Yes, the levis are put on the tax bills annually, and so when they get their property tax bill, there's a separate direct levy portion, and they pay it just with their property taxes in December and April, and every year until, for instance, if it matures in 2014, that's 1314. Normally, if we have the reserve fund intact, that last year, the reserve fund will make that last year's payment, and so they'll be levied until probably about a year before that.
Just like that summer's $68,000 and summer's $5,000, so, how does that differ?
Those are, well, they're based on the, the property sites, as well as the benefit that they're receiving from the district. So, you might have one parcel that's acres, and then one that's just a single-family residential unit. So, then that's why, as a parcel subdivides, the parcel or the levy that's assessed to that one actually will be reduced as well. So, that's why you do have those varying amounts. What presents tonight, even though Michelle did present the assessment portion of it this evening on the agenda, are the foreclosure processes. And when we actually do the bond sales, we make some commitments to the bondholders that says if there's a certain delinquency at a certain rate, then we will automatically initiate the foreclosure process, because we want to be sure that we can continue to make those bond payments. So, and I think a couple of the districts that we have tonight, there may be one large property owner, and even though the reserve is fully intact, we believe that it's prudent for us to start that foreclosure process and just ensure that we can make those payments for principal and interest to the bondholders. So, and I think that we have three separate reports this evening. One of them is 88-2, and that one, the reserve fund, is not intact, and that's why we're saying we need to do this, because in fact, a couple of years back, we actually used a lot of the money that were in the reserve fund, and we couldn't make some of the principal and interest payments. So, we, we want to be sure that we stand on top of it. So, again, based on those bond covenants, every year, we have to analyze what the delinquency rate is, if the reserve funds are still intact, and then based on those guidelines that we've already established in those covenants, we basically say we're required to follow those rules and start the foreclosure process. Some of them are discretionary, but it's still our recommendation to initiate the foreclosure. And I think one of the things that Michelle did mention was a new process that we put in place a couple of years back was, as soon as we would strip this from the county, we would initially set it out to our foreclosure attorney, we'd, we'd start some legal fees, and we said, you know, for the regular, for the single-family residential unit, those fees could be $300, $400, $500. Let's give them another 30 days, let's send them a notice, an official letter that says, hey, you didn't pay your bill, you remit within the next 30 days, and we'll start this process. But, you know, we're trying to work with you, and that was really successful, as Michelle mentioned, that we have been very successful in getting the residential homeowners to pay based on that letter, instead of just get their tax bill, they get this letter. But we have to be a little bit more diligent with some of the larger property owners, and sometimes it does require the attorneys to be involved and to start that foreclosure process. So, we can certainly address the specific districts, but I know Michelle was presenting just the whole assessment process.
And there's just five of them? Because that's always asked, what are the three?
There are, there are three districts this evening that we are recommending the foreclosure on. The districts are 1988-2, the 1999-1 Assessment District, and the other one is the Community Facilities District, 1988-1. So, there are three districts that are on the consent calendar this evening. But certainly, if you have any questions, we could address them, or I'm not sure what protocol is, we keep going to them a little bit more now, or during the calendar, if you have any specific questions.
Counsel?
I don't want to speak.
City Attorney, if you would allow us to make some comments. If there are specific questions on those items, I'd recommend that we pull them from the consent calendar agenda and take those, take them up as soon as we complete the presentation.
So, Counsel, are there any questions on the items that are on the consent calendar? If there are, we need to pull them off the consent calendar for discussion.
I'd like to pull the 82.
Which one?
The one that's under 82.
Okay.
The 88-2 is the one that does not have the reserve, so that's, we should address that one. We were hopeful that we would be able to have good news by tonight, but we don't, so, yeah, we'd be glad to provide more information on that district.
Do you get any more information?
Absolutely. But, let me do the presentation portion.
Okay.
We need to pull up my consent.
Okay. So, then, are you asking to pull that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, we will now go to public comment, then.
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on agenda items during consideration of the items. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. As a courtesy to others, please silence all your cell phones. And I do not have anybody speaking under public comment, okay?
At this time, at this time. Then we will go to consent calendar. If you would read that, please.
Tonight, we have nine items on the consent calendar. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of June 26th and July 17th, and the regular meeting of July 17th. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, which was pulled and will be discussed, foreclosure proceedings for 1988-2 Assessment District. Number four, foreclosure proceedings for 1999-1 Assessment District. Number five, foreclosure proceedings for the Community Facilities District, 1988-1. Number six, resolution designating filing positions, disclosure categories for conflict of interest. Number seven, public education and government funding. Number eight, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending May 2012. And number nine, after-school education and safety MOU with the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District.
Okay, item number three has been pulled. Look, shall we discuss that before we do the entire consent calendar?
Absolutely.
Michelle, say it.
End of that report. Sorry about that. In July of 1993, 1988-2 bonds were sold in the amount of $3,430,000. At June 30th of each year, the amount of delinquent taxes is analyzed by the Finance Department to determine a delinquency ratio for the year. For our bond covenants, as Inez explained, if the ratio is 5% or more of the total amount levied for the tax year, and the amount of the reserve fund is less than the reserve requirement, foreclosure proceedings on those properties that are delinquent must be initiated. The total levy for the 2011 12-year was $274,083.18. Of that, $107,326.92 in parcel, in accounting for two parcels, were delinquent, which is a ratio of 39.1%, well above the 5% ratio that they set in the bond covenants. And also, as Inez mentioned, for this particular district, the reserve is not intact, so we are required to strip these parcels from the county rolls and proceed with foreclosure proceedings with the foreclosure attorney. If you have any answer, any questions you might have, or...
Councilman Cruz?
Well, it shows a deficit of $9,550, correct? That's how much is missing from the fund?
Correct. If we analyze the cash we have on hand right now compared to the bond payment that we need to make on September 2nd, we are deficit $9,550.
So, if I understand this correctly, there is something in the reserve fund that will cover that. Where's, where are these monies coming from if things do not go well as far as the...
That's something that Council will have to determine if we are not successful. We've been negotiating with the property owner, discussing with the property owner for several weeks, and we had hoped that he would have made payment by today and would be able to not have to worry about this. Correct, if we analyze the cash we have on hand right now, compared to the bond payment that we need to make on September second, we are deficit nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
So, if I understand this correctly, there is something in the reserve fund that will cover that, where's, where are these monies coming from, if things do not go well as far as the, uh-
That's something that council will have to determine, if we are not successful, we've been negotiating with the property owner, discussing with the property owner for several weeks, and we had hoped that he would have made payment by today, and would be able to not have to worry about this. So we'll be continuing those discussions with him, and hopefully, coming to some resolution where we won't have to worry about that, but if we do, I'm sure we'll be bringing that item back to council.
What if any fees are even be paying as far as the bond being paid, then?
I'm sorry?
The bond itself, since we're short nine thousand dollars? Are we able to make that bond payment, is what I'm asking?
Well, we would be just about nine thousand dollars short, so what we would do, um, is we would pay the principal and interest amount that we could pay, so the bondholders, in theory, would not receive a hundred percent of what they would be otherwise entitled to. Um, at some future date, if we were successful in collecting amounts that were delinquent, then they would get those monies later on, we have, um, the, the interesting thing about this district is, the property owner is the owner for three parcels, and, and he, his debt service is about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, a hundred and seven thousand dollars this year, and what we have done before is, we were actually in default for eighty-eight dash two district, we were not able to pay the interest or the principal amount, we had to send notices out to the bondholders. There's a, there's a very, very specific guidelines on how we actually proceed, these are not backed by the general fund of the city, they are not backed by the city, so basically, the responsibility is that the bondholders will receive a lesser amount than they would otherwise be entitled to receive.
Can you just answer my question, because I was more concerned about our general fund? Thank you.
Does this affect our bond rating?
Well, um, it could, I mean, I think whenever the city is out in the bond market, and we're looking at doing a refinancing, it, it is something I think that people are looking at, even our redevelopment bonds right now, S and P has this on a watch right now, or all of the redevelopment agencies in the state of California, because of what happened with AB fourteen eighty-four, so, could it affect us? Yes, I mean, it doesn't really affect the City of Galt if we were to go out there and issue some bonds, but I, I think that it does rest in the back of some of the investors' minds.
So then, if we do not get this collected, it'll come back to the council to decide what kind of action we would take, but-
We would actually have to go back and, and try to determine, um, the processes that we would go through, there would be no obligation for any of the city funds, there are certain mechanics that would happen, where we could just remit the amount of money that we do have on board, which would not require council action, but we would certainly want to keep council informed, if, um, some of our bonds basically would be in default, so we would keep you apprised of that, but there are certain guidelines that we would just, would follow, it's just, it's purely mechanical, but we would definitely keep council and community informed on what the process is.
Questions have been answered for me, thank you.
Okay, would you be interested in moving the item?
Yes, ma'am, I move, we accept it as, as explained.
Second, oh, yeah, second, all right.
Um, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers, I-
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, that item now is passed unanimously, regarding the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item, scheduled matters, amending the City of Galt nondisposal facility element.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a, uh, public hearing for a relatively obscure item that, um, is, kind of goes back to the days when the state first passed the bills regarding recycling, and mandated cities to have a, you know, reduction in their solid waste, um, uh, generation, if you will, and, uh, there was a committee formed throughout the county to oversee this whole process, and, and to actually, we, we thought we would have to actually have this hearing, and then send this plan to that committee to be approved, and they told us that, well, we don't really do any of that stuff anymore, but the requirement for the, for the public hearing is still on the books, so we are following the rules. Basically, this involves the, um, the, the city's plan to show how we're, you know, helping, uh, meet our recovery goals, and the, um, specific item has to do with California Waste Recovery and their, their new, um, recycling facility that was approved by the council at, like, your last meeting, or the one before. Um, so it's sort of a moot point, but again, because it is a separate process, we didn't want to mix the two last time, so we're bringing it to you tonight. The, uh, really, the, the, the element itself is just kind of a description of, of what we've done in the past, and, uh, with, with this issue, and it's updated now to, um, show the new facility that was, that was approved previously, so, um, nothing's changed, uh, that project was approved with various conditions in the land use, uh, uh, process, and, um, this just, again, is checking off a box on a state checklist for us, so, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, of course, we have Jack Fiore here from Cal Waste also, if you really want to get into the project again, but, um-
I, I think at this time, we will open the public hearing, and then take questions from the council. Uh, public hearing is now open, anyone in the audience wishing, wishing to speak or have questions, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Okay, council, do you have questions regarding this?
No.
None? Would you read the recommended action, please?
Okay, I conduct a public hearing to receive comments, and adopt a resolution to amend the City of Galt's nondisposal facility element, and adopt a resolution amending the City of Galt, oh, it's on, that's right.
So adopt a resolution, okay.
Amending the City of Galt nondisposal facility element.
So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to approve the recommended-
What does, so Councilmember Singleton made the motion-
I can go second, please.
Okay, Councilmember Shelton has seconded the motion, is there any other discussion on this item, a question? If not, I would call for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, the resolution is passed unanimously, next item, please.
Next item, under regular calendars, discretionary funds?
Um, I would like to take fifty dollars out of my, um, discretionary funds to give to, um, the northeast, uh, area for their, uh, what do you call a national night out? Thank you, I was gonna say hot on, nice, I knew that was it. For a national night out, um, just to help them there, they have quite a big crowd over there, so I wanted to, um, donate to their, either.
Council, you've heard the request, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Uh-
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed, you just spend your money. Okay, next item.
Next item, under City Attorney's Office, suspension of the Brown Act by state legislature.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, as part of the two thousand and twelve thirteen state budget, signed by the governor at the end of June, the legislature suspended portions of the Brown Act in order to avoid having to reimburse local agencies for the state mandate. Uh, the state budget contains a schedule or a list of certain pieces of legislation, otherwise known as state mandates, that are suspended during this budget year, and actually, uh, pursuant to another bill, have been suspended for a total of three years, and the Brown Act, or portions of the Brown Act, uh, are included on that list. So one of the key provisions that, uh, has been suspended is the obligation of local agencies to prepare and post seventy-two hours before we hold a regular meeting, an agenda that contains a brief description of the items that are going to be discussed at the meeting. There's some other portions of the Brown Act that have also been suspended, but that is probably the one that would be most readily apparent to, to members of the public. So with this suspension, while the city may choose not to comply with the above provisions of the Brown Act without facing any legal consequences, the absence of an agenda obviously would make it very, uh, much more difficult for members of our community to know what items were going to be coming before the city council for action, and to participate in, uh, city government activities. Additionally, the, the absence of a gen, of an agenda would run counter to the high priority that this council has placed on transparency. So, um, the reason for bringing this item to the council this evening is, first of all, to, uh, to answer any questions the council may have regarding this matter, and further to, uh, request direction from the council, that notwithstanding the fact that the city will not be receiving reimbursement from the state for this legislative provision, that the city continue to comply with the Brown Act in all, in all aspects, as, as we have, uh, in prior years.
Any chance we'll ever get paid for it?
Um, sometime, probably around two thousand and fifteen, there's a chance. The next three years, I, I think that, uh, we're gonna be on our own.
So the council is asked to give direction on how you feel about, uh, the Brown Act, or this portion of it. Councilmember Singleton, do you have any comments?
I think we need to stay as transparent as possible, I, I agree with the, uh-
Yeah, I say we should, should be a chilling agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. Recommend we continue the Brown Act. A second, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I think we have a, uh, direction, it's unanimous consensus, that we will continue to observe the Brown Act, informing the public of our meetings and the agendas-
Okay.
Of those meetings. Is that all the action you need?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's, that's sufficient, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, I think we all agree that it is important, uh, to be as transparent as we can to the public, thank you for your agreement on that. Next item.
Next item, Treasurer's Office, Treasurer's report for the period ending June two thousand twelve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members, once a year, I get to announce how much interest that, uh, the city has earned, uh, at the end of the fiscal year, and tonight, tonight's that night. Um, I can certainly, I'll tell you this, I can remember sitting in this chair twenty years ago, and announcing this, this figure for the very first time, and it's the very first time that the city had ever earned one million dollars in interest. I'm not gonna tell you that tonight. Interest rates are about one-tenth of what they used to be, uh, and so now, I will just say, tonight, the city earned for the last fiscal year four hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and six dollars. I will also say that if and when, uh, interest rates do go up, that, uh, the city is, is well-positioned, uh, and can certainly take advantage of that, we, as a city, currently have about thirty-three percent, or a third of our portfolio in the state of California, Leif funds, uh, about twenty-two percent, uh, in local, uh, banks, uh, just CDs and money markets, and that's come, that's somewhere right around fifteen million dollars, so that's how much we have invested right here in Galt. Uh, and then, the remainder, about forty percent in, in government agencies, those government agencies are mostly Fannie Mae, uh, agencies that are callable step-ups, so as I said, when the interest rates do rise, whenever that is, we will either, that, that issue will either be called, or it will gradually step up with interest rates. So that's why I purchase those, those particular step-ups, so we can take advantage of those higher rates when, when they do rise. And that's, uh, that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, um, before you have June of, of twelve, and I ask for your approval.
I think some people don't feel real secure with Fannie Mae, um, what type of security do we have?
What type of security do we have?
Yeah.
Well, that, uh, I think what you probably hear with, with Fannie Mae is, is mostly driven by the media, um, in my, my personal opinion, uh, you know, Fannie, the, the government's not gonna allow Fannie Mae to fail. Okay, that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, Freddie Mac is in the same, is in the same boat, yeah.
Okay, I had to ask.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I see on here that we've got, uh, one CD that's gonna expire next month, starting for two thousand twelve, do you just, um, are you just gonna re-up that?
And what, what, uh, Councilmember Powers is talking about is, we have a Farmers and Merchants, uh, CD that is due to expire September fourteenth, it's currently earning point six percent, which, in today's world, is good, okay? Um, and that's, that's worth six million dollars. What's gonna happen is, is this, Farmers and Merchants and I will, will negotiate a price, a, a new, a new interest rate. If it's not what I feel is gonna be adequate, uh, then what I'll do is, is probably place that six million in Leif, at least on a temporary basis, um, because right now, Leif is, is providing, uh, point three, can't really, it's out of my glasses, point, point three six percent. So, um, and, but if Farmers and Merchants comes back with a higher rate than point three six, then I'll re-up it for, say, another year, or possibly eighteen months, depending upon our cash flow needs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Then is there a motion to accept this report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, motion is passed unanimously, next item, please.
Next item, appropriations funds for consultant services.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, this evening, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and seven dollars to fund consultant services related to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. By way of background, as you'll recall, on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, the governor signed into law the dissolution act, which basically abolished every redevelopment agency in the state of California with an effective date of February first, two thousand and twelve. As part of the current year state budget process, on June twenty-seventh, the governor passed AB fourteen eighty-four, which made, um, technical and substantive amendment to what we were previously working on, so, what AB fourteen eighty-four basically does is it adds more, uh, reporting, more, um, clawback provisions, basically, it's an administrative burden, and the cost and, and the risk to us as a local agency are, are very severe now, they've dramatically changed. A couple of things I do want to bring to your attention, um, that we were asking for support or some assistance with, is administrative support services. Uh, in a nor, in an effort to stay abreast of some of the deadlines that are coming up, one of the first ones was the housing report that was due on August first, um, we received approximately two days advance notice when the form was released by Department of Finance, and we had literally two days to work on that. We asked for the assistance of RSG, who has, um, familiarity with redevelopment projects, and various reports, we actually had them referred by other cities within the state of California, we checked on what their hourly rate would be, which is what they would be charging us, but the amount would not exceed fifteen thousand dollars, but it is on an hourly basis, and, um, we checked their references, and everything, their amounts were competitive, what they will assist us with is to complete the recognized obligation payment schedule, the first one for the new period will be due on September first, and the reason why that re, that schedule is so critical is because, um, in that, not only will we be showing the obligations that are due for January through June two thousand and thirteen, but any shortfall that has already occurred for January through June two thousand and twelve, and July through December two thousand and twelve, all of those amounts have to be included on this next ROP, recognized obligation payment schedule. Um, so we know that we were, went, um, and filed a complaint against the County Attorney Controller's Office, we were successful in getting the amount of debt payment, so there is a payment due to other, um, taxing entities that we want to incorporate into this ROP, but it is critical that this ROP be presented in an accurate manner. The penalty, though, for this one, if it is not filed by September first, and again, it has to be accepted by the successor agency, and then it has to be submitted to the Oversight Board, but the penalty for not, um, filing this by September first is ten thousand dollars per day, and it's not against the successor agency, it's against the city. Ten thousand dollars per day for every day that is late, and there's also a twenty-five percent hit on our administrative allowance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's critical that we submit this on time, and that it be accurate. The other item that we're looking for some assistance on is the financial services, we had the firm of Urban Futures, who was the financial advisor when we did the RDA bond issue back in two thousand and eleven, and we made a presentation to the Oversight Board, and we were actually presenting the benefit of the continued use of redevelopment funds for the con, for the development of the redevelopment area. There were some, there were some comments that were floating around that the construction funds could be used to defuse bonds, which we have insufficient amounts to defuse bonds. Defeesance is when you take the full amount, and you retire that debt, and you defuse the debt, and we certainly did not have the full amount, so that is not an option, or was not an option. an option. The other option that we heard some agencies were kind of floating around out there was that we could use construction funds to pay annual debt service. Based on our trust agreement with Bank of New York, that was not an option for us. So really, the only option we had was to proceed with development of the redevelopment project areas, and so the financial advisor did make that presentation, there was a cost of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to that. And finally, auditing services. The city's independent audit firm, Mazin Associates, will now have to do certain additional processes related to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency for the period of July first, two thousand and eleven, through January thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, and that cost is six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. It's important to note, however, that in AB fourteen eighty-four, one of the provisions in there is that we should hire a public accountant to perform a review. The State Controller's Office, as of today, has still not issued what a review is comprised of. It's different from an audit, it is different from agreed-upon procedures, they have not defined what a review is. They're working with the CPA organization in the state of California to come up and define what a review is. So at this point, one of our strategic goals was that we would hire someone by August fifteenth. At this point, the auditing accounting firms are not submitting a proposal because they need to know what the review actually consists of. So we have been in communication with the County Auditor Controller to see if they're gonna do something on a county-wide basis. We have been in communication with our own independent auditing firm, and again, we have not been successful because firms are reluctant to give us a quote for a review that they are unaware of what it actually consists of. So that may be coming forward in the future as well. All of these three costs will be included within the ROP for the January through June, two thousand and thirteen period. Again, it is unknown whether the Department of Finance and/or the County Auditor Controller's Office will approve those, if they will take the position that those are part of our administrative cost allowance, it is unknown at this point. They can question and criticize just about every line item that we present, but we will be incorporating those three items in our next ROP. The financial impact is that there would be an impact to the general fund of twenty thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Again, we do expect that, well, we will be including those in the ROP for the next period, and we hope that they will be reimbursed through the redevelopment property tax trust fund being allocated by the County Auditor Controller's Office. Again, the clawback provision, well, not the clawback, but the penalty is ten thousand dollars per day for every day that the schedule is not submitted on time, but there is a clawback provision I do wanna bring to your attention, and one of them is that if we fail to adhere to these deadlines, that they could actually go back after our sales tax, because that was in question during the distribution of July, and if that remains insufficient, then they can actually go after our property tax. Both of those are general fund items, so we wanna be sure that we're protecting our revenue sources and our reserves, but AB fourteen eighty-four is just a whole different ballgame.
And when you say "they," you're talking about those people in Sacramento, correct?
That's right.
Yes, Governor Legislature, and basically, they're setting guidelines, they're setting guidelines, Department of Finance is interpreting what the intent was and how to mathematically come up with reports. We just received the schedule that's due on September first, we just received the schedule, the report format, and I believe that was on Thursday, no, Wednesday, August first, that was Wednesday, for the report that we have to submit by September first. And so we were hoping that we would be able to get it on tonight's agenda, but there's just, we just needed more time to be sure that everything was correct, the ROPs, that the true-up provision, and having one day from Wednesday, August first, to the agenda deadline, and it was just too short of time period. So we will have it on the next agenda for the successor agency and then the Oversight Board, but we're still waiting for clarification from the State Controller's Office, that some of those deadlines have not been pushed back. We're still working under the premise that information is due by September first, so...
The review that we still don't know what they want reviewed, is that also to a point where if we don't pay it on time or do it on time, we could be penalized?
Well, we believe so, that review, a portion of it is due on October first for housing amounts on October first. The non-housing review is due by January first, and so we haven't heard any pushback on the date. Again, to bring in auditor, a public accountant auditor onboard today, not even knowing what the review consists of, again, State Controller's Office is trying to work with the accounting group in the state of California to come up what the review is. I think that we're hoping that they're gonna push that back, not because they're helping us out as a local agency, but they'll have some fight, but pushback from some of the accounting groups, knowing that they won't be able to live up to that deadline. It's very unclear.
It is very unclear, and it's very...
We do know that there are those deadlines, and there are penalties if we don't meet them, so this is a priority for the city, for the department.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a comment. I feel like a little fish at the end of the feeding thing that's getting eaten up, and we all know this is an election year. I hope people will make their voices heard over things like this, because we, at this level, are the ones that are getting hurt tremendously. That's my editorial comment. Do the council members have any...
Yeah, I have an editorial comment, too, so, you know, a lot of people, because it's a lot of words and big words and big programs and stuff, but, you know, I think it's important to remember that, you know, we almost lost half a million dollars a couple of months ago without the quick thinking of Steve and Jason and you, and having to hire an attorney, because we are being held hostage by the state of California. They change their rules every time you turn around, like Inez says, they send you an email two days or a letter, two days before they want all this other money from you, before they've even given you the money that they owe you, that it's really important that we stay on top of all of this stuff. So as, you know, as much as it's difficult for us to do general fund money, it would be a real kick in the seat of the pants if we had to lose a lot of money. And unfortunately, as they're baiting and switching us all the time, we have to stay on top of it, and it's really important that we do.
Are there any questions, Inez, or...
It is very difficult to read the legislation, read the bill, and it actually has an effective date from July first, two thousand and eleven. It's like you just approved it in June, but it has a retro effective date, and so it is difficult, but it definitely is a priority. We recognize the importance of protecting our general funds, and we want to keep our reserve intact, so we recognize how significant this is, and we are doing our best to stay on top of it.
Councilmembers, any, anything else that we wanna vent?
Just real, yeah, don't get me started.
Questions?
Department of Finance with County, are we in good terms with them again now, or are we gonna have to file another restraining order?
We are now on speaking terms. The case was dismissed, officially dismissed. Once they received word of the dismissal, we are now speaking again, so we are sharing information, and they're, the County Auditor Controller's Office as well, they are put in a position where they are clawback provisions against them, they have penalties as well. So I think everyone's trying to make the work with what we have in place right now. So we are working on the demand payment that they did, the allocation from other tax entities, we're still waiting for a distribution from that. We were told that we would receive that, or that that distribution was done a couple of weeks ago. It had not been, and we received a confirmation on Friday that said we would receive it today. I have not seen it as of yet, we didn't receive notice, but I'm going through the bank statement or online just to see if it hit. So sometimes they'll say it happened and it hasn't, so we're staying on top of all of those emails and the information, but yes, we are now in speaking terms with Department of Finance and the County Auditor Controller's Office.
Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah, it seems like about every two years that this happens, you know, to the local entities. I wish there was some magical way to stop it. It's, of course, it's called take care of your budget, but unfortunately, this is something that we have to do, so when you're ready for a motion.
I think we need to read the recommended actions.
Yeah.
Get back in line here.
Adopt a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred seven dollars to fund consultant services related to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency.
Okay, that's the recommended action. Do we have a motion to that effect, please?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Shelton made the motion, and Councilman Singleton seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously, and thank you, Inez, for that informative, but very confusing report. Thank you, thank you for your support. You're welcome. Next item, please.
Next item, under Police Department, appropriation of funds for nine-one-one educational materials.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the city council?
I don't look like a chief, but I'm gonna fill in for the chief tonight. This item is to appropriate some funds, specifically five thousand forty-five dollars
in grant revenue, we're gonna be receiving from the state of California. There's money that's collected on your telephone bills, those little taxes that you see, that's collected at both the federal and the state level, and some of those taxes that are collected actually go back into the local jurisdiction in this case. They're appropriated out to the various jurisdictions. This year, we're getting about five thousand dollars. We're gonna be using those monies, you have to use it for nine-one-one emergency response related services. We're gonna, in the past, we've used them for education for kids, covering books, other things in the schools, we're doing the same, recommending the same thing this year, so appropriating. What we're asking the council to do tonight is to appropriate the funds for this program, authorize they use for that purpose.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that item? Yeah, I would just comment that we have heard on the news a few times where young children have actually called nine-one-one to save their mother or someone, so it is important that we reach them and educate them on this.
Absolutely.
Okay, recommended action on this? Here's what.
Okay, recommended action, approve the appropriation of reimbursable state emergency telephone number account funds for nine-one-one education materials.
Okay, so the recommended action is their motion.
Okay.
Okay, I think I heard the Vice Mayor first made the motion, do we have, who was seconded it?
Mark seconded it.
Mark, Councilman Cruz, roll call vote, please.
Don't call me late for dinner.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously, thank you. Next item.
Next item, social, overall, academic, and recreation after-school programs.
Better known as SOAR.
Which is short, SOAR is short for, saved me the time of explaining all that. Presentation that I did earlier was on ACES, but this program is gonna mirror ACES quite a bit, so you, it may sound a lot like ACES, it's a different program, so I'll just go through and explain a little bit about it. At the June twenty-seventh, Galt Elementary School District Board meeting, the school district board voted to reduce after-school transportation for students. With these cuts to transportation, the city of Galt and school districts have been working together to find solutions to assist the community by providing students an activity to bridge the time from after-school to when the parents are able to pick them up after work. Staff feels the best solution would be to create an after-school program similar to ACES, which ACES is that the three elementary school districts, Greer, Valley Oaks, and McCaffrey. Thank you. We'd like to put SOAR at the three remaining elementary schools, which are Marango, Lake Canyon, and River Oaks. Unlike ACES, the SOAR program, which stands for Students Overall Academic and Recreation, will not be an academic-based or state-funded program, but with the criteria to be more recreational. Although SOAR's main focus will not be academic, homework and tutoring will be provided to students, there will be time set aside for that, but it will not be its main focus. Just propose that this program be available to the first hundred students on a first-come-first basis at each site, and because this program will not be supported or subsidized by a grant, parents will be required to register their children and pay a monthly fee to the city to ensure placement in the program. A monthly fee of a hundred and fifteen dollars per participant will be charged to help offset the costs. With all new programs, there are many uncertainties in regards to enrollment numbers. The appropriation of a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars is budgeted for projected forty students per site. Should this program exceed the projected forty students per site, staff will return to council and ask for additional funds and/or a fee adjustment to accommodate up to a hundred students per site, depending on the enrollment. So staff tonight is asking council to adopt a resolution approving the establishment of the SOAR after-school program at Lake Canyon, Marango Ranch, and River Oaks Elementary School Districts, and appropriating funds in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred for supplies and materials and staffing. Also, Karen Shauer's in the audience today, if you'd like to ask her any questions, and I'm able to answer anything for you.
Dr. Shauer, would you like to come and make a comment on why you think this program would be beneficial?
While she's coming up, let me make a comment, I think it's significant, it's in the staff report. School district has, and we've been working closely with the school district, you can come on up, Karen. They've agreed and offered to allow us to use their facilities at no charge, which is what we've had in the past, but that includes, they're gonna pick up the cost of janitorial utilities and so forth, which is unique. I know there was an article in the Lodi News not too long ago about the Lodi Elementary School District, and they're charging the city for the use of their facilities, and they were gonna have to cut the programs because the school district and the city weren't able to get together and come up with a solution. So I think this really does show how the city and the school district works well together to come up with programs that benefit the children in our community. So I wanted to thank the school district for that.
Thank you. Dr. Shauer?
I would like to say, you know, I think about our Galt Youth Master Plan that we've worked on together, and in terms of just partnerships to expand opportunities for children, this is really a great, a great opportunity. I did speak to the principals of the three schools that we're looking to work with you on for this program, and the principals felt that there would not be a problem with coming up with more than forty, so we, you know, we would do whatever we can do to help get this opportunity out there, so parents know. I think you brought up the very difficult decision that our Board of Trustees made concerning transportation, and while this program, I think, can serve children that don't ride the bus, the fact is, is this will help families who may not be able to get to school right after school. It would be a safe and enriching environment for the children, and so we think it's really a win-win.
You think it's a good idea?
Yes, yes, and our Board President is here tonight, too. John Gordon, the Board President, would you like to comment any further on that?
I just really appreciate the partnership that we have with the city and hope that we can build a program that is sustainable over time and can run itself, and I hope, my wish is that we can work with the Galt Youth Committee, as well as the PTAs, to develop programs that are enriching and that are in demand, you know, that students are really tuned into, so. And I also hope, if we can make this work, that we can provide perhaps a side scale so that it would allow, because we have so many students, over sixty percent of our students are free, free and reduced lunch, that that would be a consideration down the road as the program gets funding, that would take into consideration.
I would share with you that our Youth Committee is gonna be considering putting some money into a scholarship fund for those who may have a hard time paying the monthly fee, so these kids are great. Any questions for Dr. Shauer or Chair Gordon? No? Thank you so much for coming up and giving us your thoughts on this.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do love that, I did have a few things I wanna, kinda combine it together with the two, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, I know how, having come from somebody that works for the budget and is down myself, I know how difficult some of these things are, but nobody, there are very few people that just have one child, so when you look at someone that has two, and three, and four, and we're going up to two hundred dollars and three hundred and four hundred dollars, and I know that, and that gets pretty expensive, although it's a great program. And Armando, you told me that you have, you do get scholarships, there are some scholarship monies, and can you kind of tell us a little bit about that? And then I was wondering if maybe the school district could come up with some help on some of the scholarships for the people that can't really afford it, so that was kind of my question.
Sure. Last year, we actually passed a, council passed a scholarship procedure. A child under seventeen can ask for up to fifty percent of the program cost to be offset by this scholarship, up to the money that we have in the budget, which is currently around four thousand dollars. Once that money runs out, then we would not be providing any more scholarships. They can ask for no more than a hundred dollars per family in a calendar year, and, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it, and basically, if you... Basically, if you, if you qualify for a reduced lunch, you should be able to qualify for our scholarship program.
Which is great, but if it's only $100 per year, and a lot of the families that are with the reduced lunches, I'm sure, like I said, more than one child, that's kind of a big hardship. So I would, is there any way that the school district has any funding that they could kind of slush into that? Yes, please. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I do want to say that we've gone after a 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant three times, and we've not been funded, and that would provide free federal funding for after-school services, because certainly there is a high number of students that receive free and reduced lunch. We are watching to see if that proposal will come through again, and we'd like to proceed because we can do this, we just have got to get the funding, and it's so competitive. I did speak to the city manager, to your city manager, about the fact that by doing, even this is a first step to maybe position us to be more successful with other grant funds. I think that if we're able to publicize this perhaps to parent support groups at our schools, that perhaps there are funds that they could contribute to help students with scholarships. When we have offered the Sly Park Field Trip opportunity, for example, which I believe is several hundred dollars, or a couple hundred dollars per student, and there's scholarships that our PTAs help out with as well. There is a pay-for-after-school service at Marengo Ranch, and Champions is a quality program. The charge per child is over $300 per child. So when I see what we can do through Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Support as a starting point, this is still very reasonable, but that I agree, hard for families to come through, but again, families that need childcare and a safe environment, they would be paying more, so this is a good first step.
And depending on the success of the program, we may be able to reduce that cost over time. The more students we have sign up, the cheaper it becomes per student, so we can take a look at that and see what we get. What we didn't want to have happen is not charge enough, and that'd have to be really subsidizing the program out of our general funds, so we charge an amount that is basically, as long as we have at least 25 kids per school site, then we can break even on the program, and the more we have beyond that, then we have the potential to be able to reduce that down the road.
We need to see, we need to see what the interest is.
Have a pilot program and see how it goes, see what kind of demand there is and see what response we receive.
And I think we can keep a list, too, of families that would like this opportunity, but right now they can't afford it, and this helps us build the case with, so we will do that.
Great.
And we'll be getting.
Because, you know, statistics are great for those grants.
Yes.
So you can just start, you know, looking and, you know how that goes, like I said, and it's good to keep the numbers of the kids that can't go, so maybe there is some ways we could get some supplemental money for that.
And you'll be giving us updates on program how it's going, assuming.
Yes.
And I was wondering, would there be any consideration to maybe some of the families who live further away from the schools that would have a really hard, you know, it's really hard to pick them up now that there's no transportation, is there any?
So could we, again, this is a, would be a city-run program, but I think we could look, we could perhaps on the registration form, which I haven't seen yet, because I know we need to see what you're going to do here in terms of approval, but I think we could find that out in terms of, that parents would have address on there. There could be preference for students that, you know, live, that need transportation services, you know, that are further away, so maybe there could be preference.
Armando?
We're also looking at, and Richard and his public works staff have been working with the school district on other options as far as transportation, working with our transit provider and other things, so we're kind of taking the transportation issue and hitting it with multi-pronged approach. One is after-school program, another one is the transit provider, seeing what kind of services can be provided through the dial-out services, and then just those kids that, those kids we can't reach, making sure they have safe routes to schools and they have safe avenues to get to those, those schools, so we're kind of taking it in a three-pronged approach.
Okay. Any more questions for Dr. Shower? Thank you, Dr. Shower. And before we get into voting on this, I want to say, I'm so happy that our staff is bringing this to us. You know, we've set our goals, but really this is coming from our staff to us to approve, and I think it's wonderful to see you taking the initiative and coming up with these programs, especially you, Mr. Salis, or whoever else is involved. I'm sure there's more than one, so.
Case in point.
Okay, what is the recommended, or is there any other, I didn't want to cut anybody off, is there any other questions or comments on this item?
I have a comment. I think it's a nice start, and I believe the way that the city and the school and different agencies are, you know, we're starting to work together closer and closer as the months go by, I mean, compared to what we were doing things, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we've all got to work together, so I really believe that this is, you know, everyone's going to come to the table, and your concerns, Mary Lou, and I think, I really believe that it'll just start to really be very successful.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Then I, if you would read the recommended action, that would be?
Adopt a resolution approving the establishment of the Social Overall Academic and Recreation After-School Program, or SOAR, at the Lake Canyon, Marengo Ranch, and River Oaks Elementary Schools, and appropriate funds in the amount of $124,200 for supplies, materials, staffing, and $124,200 in matching revenue.
Loop to adopt.
We have motion in a second. Roll call vote please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously, and thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, next item.
Water meter retrofit program.
Let me introduce this one really quickly, and I have to thank our interim public works director, this is actually his last city council meeting as a interim public works director. Our new public works director will start on Monday, and I just want to recognize all of his efforts, and this is one that, that he's been really thinking about and working on because of his experience in the city of Lodi with their water meter program, and he brought to us a lot of insight, knowledge, experience, kind of lessons learned from Lodi, things maybe they, they would do maybe a little bit differently, and so what we have here is the benefit of his knowledge and experience, and he wants to, to share that with us before he leaves, and I believe he had some really good recommendations that I support, and we wanted to present to the council before he, he does leave us, so with that, I'll turn it over to Richard.
Richard, before you start, I think on behalf of the whole city council, we really enjoyed having you around, and hope you'll come back and visit us every once in a while. I have some plans for you on my own.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your kind words, and I have really enjoyed my time here. It was one of those things where when I got here and got into things, I really enjoyed it a lot. When I got home and saw all the things that I wasn't getting done at home, it's like, I don't want to go back, but I'm here, and it did take a little longer than we counted on. I signed on for three to four months, and it's been more like nine to 10, but that's okay. And I want to, I think part of the reason that I really wanted to get this one in front of you before I left was that, I did kind of feel badly that the department didn't do the greatest job on this. The council acted on this back in 2008, and if you could get started, I don't have the control of the slides, so I guess it's just going to do this for me. So just kind of, I'm going to go through these items, the background on the program, and what our alternative option I'm recommending, and then a few other considerations to keep in the back of your mind. So the background on the program is that this started back in several decades ago when the state really pushed water meters. There was a bill in 2004 that we keep talking about that actually set the mandate that we get these things done by 2010, under recalling phase one, and then everybody else in the program, the city would be, have to be done by 2026. But it really goes back to the 1992 law that said all new services need to be metered. It didn't say you had to read the meters, but put them in. In the intervening time, there were actually a number of cities that were charging flat rates, had water supply contracts, particularly from the federal government. I think, I mean, Pulsar may have been one, but Roseville and Fresno were fairly large cities that had to start their metering programs because of those water supply contracts. Well, as those all got moving along, I think the state kind of realized, well, there's still a few loophole cities left, mainly cities that were on groundwater, where they weren't buying water from somebody else, and they enacted the law in 2004 that said everybody's got to do it now. And I'll kind of come back to that, too, later on in the presentation, but actually Galt, this is one area where Galt kind of got ahead of the curve, and actually back in the 90s, and I said late 90s, 90s, it was actually in the mid 90s, when they started installing water meters on non-residential surfaces. The city actually had a program to go out and put in meters on businesses that hadn't been metered prior to that, and they were doing that out of the water fund. And in 2008, the city hired a consultant to really look at this issue, and the program, if you will, was kind of broken into two phases. Phase one, it says, post-1992, tied to the original bill that I mentioned in the earlier slide, or the top part of this slide, but actually the city of Galt had been charging for water meters back to 1990, and so the water meter reserve fund that we talked about, or that we'll talk about and you're aware of, actually has customers who paid for meters going back as far as 1990. And so the city council in 2008 adopted a program to move forward on phase one, but they really had no plans for how they would do phase two, which is the, the rest of the services in the city. And it's about half and half, not quite, but you think about it that way, in terms of round numbers, that's kind of the magnitude. And this is kind of where the department kind of fell down. We had the direction in 2008, and really not too much got done. So when I got here in late 2011, my first thought was, well, I can't fix this in three months, so I'm not going to worry about it. And then wound up, I'm still here, and then hearing the comments from the public and the council and city manager particularly, that, hey, we got to keep this thing moving, I really got into it a little more detail. So let's go ahead and move on to kind of what the plan was in more detail. This is, this slide talks about what was approved back in 2008, and it was to issue a request for proposals for the installation of meters, and this was not going to be just a regular bid, it was actually going to be a turnkey-type project where the vendor would, well, would issue a request for proposals for really what was various automated reading technologies. And again, keep in mind, meters are pretty straightforward, it's how do you get them read and into your billing system is where all the, all the technology is. And I was a little disappointed in the draft RFP they had worked on, because it really threw everything out of the kitchen, in the kitchen sink in there, that show us everything and we'll have to sort it out and figure out what we want to buy. And I really didn't think that was doing good service to the city, that we really should have had a more specific thing in mind. Recognizing that this insight is based on several years since then of changes in the technology, particularly in the reading issue, this drive-by system is something that a lot of folks were kind of trying out, where you would have a small radio on the meter, and you'd be able to drive by in a car, pick up the read, and be on your way, and if you missed it, you'd probably run the block or go back out next day and do it again. Everything I've heard from talking to folks, that is rapidly falling by the wayside in favor of what's called a fixed network, where you actually have receivers. It's very similar to what PG&E has done in town with the gas meters, where they put the little receivers on the light poles, and they just push a button and it reads all the meters. That is the way to go. And when you think about it, you know, technology costs are continually coming down, labor costs are continually going up, the notion that you're going to base a decision now that's going to be last, you know, be good for the next 15 years, to invest in a system that still requires labor ongoing is, in my opinion, not, not a good thing to do. So to me, that, that should have been crossed off the list, we should just gone with a fixed network type system. And then the selection was being made on various criteria, and so we would be spending a lot of time chewing through all these proposals and coming up with a selection. The, the, again, as I mentioned, we have $1.7 million set aside for meters, and they were collected from developers and builders of new homes, and over the past, since it started back in 1990, as you can imagine, what the city charged over that time period changed quite a bit, and not only that, but the reading equipment that we were looking at has changed as well. And then since 2004, the city's actually been requiring new builders and developers to install a meter, so the question kind of ends in 2004, everything since then, those meters are in. Not that there's been a lot since then, but there's, there was obviously some. So as I mentioned, here we are in 2012, the RFP is not done, and so I am suggesting, on the next slide, that we look at a little, little different approach. And that would be to, again, stick with the turnkey-type contract, but actually to do all the planning work, review the data that we have, come up with a proposal to finish the planning work, install, it's kind of like a design-build type, type contract, implement it, test it all, and, and finance the project for the whole city. This was a, as I mentioned, I have a lot of background in Lodi, and this was a big issue with, with the city of Lodi, we had obviously far more meters to deal with, and the notion of having the city continue on two different rates for the next 20 years at the time that I was there was really unpalatable. So they're looking for ways to try to do it faster, and so with, under this approach, we would go ahead and put out this RFP for, for both phases of the work. And of course, the whys, I mean, you get everything brought up to the current standards as far as the services go, we get it all done, as I mentioned, or I'm going to mention in a minute, I have been talking to some vendors about this, and doing this in six months is not an unreasonable goal. The actual construction work, it would take us a few months to get the RFP out, to do everything, and negotiate a contract, but the actual work is looking like around six months. You get a complete meter audit with all the mapping associated in the GPS-type mapping that would go into our GIS system, we'd be able to clearly match up meters with parcels. This is an area that I've been a little concerned about, that we probably do have parcels that really aren't metered, or not, we don't even have in our books perhaps, so we need to do that, this audit is very important. Again, they can finance the whole project. It has to work, there's no questions about it. There's got to be 100% reads all the time, and that can be part of the performance specification. We think we can reduce quite a bit of the cost. The typical process where you have a consultant working on this, I know you're talking to my counterpart in Lodi now, they're spending a lot of money on consultants. He actually told me that the, and I'm not talking about redoing their water mains, they're doing a lot of water main work that needs engineering work, and that's all separate. The meter program itself, their, their support costs on this are approaching the cost of putting in the meters. They're getting a great, great program going, and the city doesn't have to do much, the consultants are doing all the work, but it's costing a lot of money. We can bypass quite a bit of that. The dual-rate situation I already mentioned, in fact, I was talking to Michelle earlier today, somebody was in complaining about, why can't I go back to being on flat rate? Why do I have to be on a meter or vice versa? You're going to get a lot of those kind of questions as more and more people have them, and they'll, of course, the people who think they're using less water are going to want to be on a meter, and you really can't have them self-selecting, it'll be an impact to the water fund, so you need, really you need to get everybody done. The last thing that I wanted to point out, actually there's two more, I put them on the slide. There are some state laws, the 2004 law doesn't really have a penalty in it, but other state laws that have been acted since, enacted since then, say things like you can't get state revolving loan fund money if you're not in compliance with this, not only for water, but for wastewater as well. So we kind of dodged a bullet when we did the wastewater revolving loan fund for the wastewater plant a few years ago before this other law got passed, so that wouldn't happen again if, if we, we aren't compliant. And the last thing I didn't mention on the slide was that this is a pretty good bidding climate right now, so we should get pretty good costs. And speaking of costs, I, again, I mentioned I've had some discussions with one experienced vendor in doing all this, I've actually been talking to somebody else as well, but I don't think they have quite the experience of doing this, but that's, we can figure that out later. Capital cost, around 3.9 million to do the whole, the whole town, I know the staff report says 3.1, I think, that was based on an earlier assumption about the number of services and what they need. what they need, they looked a little harder at it and gave me a new number, but again, it's still preliminary. I think one of the issues is going to be, there were some assumptions in the HGR report about how many meters we had in place, and that those could probably stay, but actually, some of those meters are pushing 20 years old, so I'm thinking we may want to, really, they only last, I think, 20 years. So, they're already at the end of their lifespan, so we probably want to replace those as well. So, that inventory of what we need to have done needs to be refined a little bit. So, these numbers are really, say, very preliminary, but it is all the costs, other than our own staff costs for working with the contractor. There is an ongoing component for support. One of the things with these meter reading systems you get now is software that allows you, that allows staff, not just the finance folks who are doing the billing, but water operating staff to query the meters and do an instantaneous read. I'd like to see us actually put all of our well pumps, or our booster pumps from the supply water. If you think about this, you could get an instantaneous read where you can lay, okay, I know how much water I'm putting into the system, I know how much water my meters are telling me, you can do some math and come up with, okay, where's the rest of that water going? Because there's always a loss. You never know how much it really is when you're on a flat rate system, because you don't know what you're selling. But when you're fully metered, you'll be able to know how much you're actually charging people for, or at least metering, if you're not charging for it, and look at that lost water component, and how serious of an issue is that? And if it's a big number, you may want to start really doing some water audits and things to look into that further. It's a great management tool. Actually, the kind of systems that we've been looking at would allow our current billing staff, even though we're not talking about changing our billing procedures, which is another option, by the way, for these kind of companies that do this work, where they could do the billing for you too, but we're not ready to talk about that yet. You would still, the customer service staff that the city has would still be able to use this software to look up from their end what's going on with that customer's meter, look at the history, see what it's reading right now, they could actually tell the system to tell me what that meter's showing. Ultimately, you could get into where people, customers could do that online, but again, that's kind of a later thing, but that's the ability you would have in these kind of systems. So, the annual cost would be around $400,000 for 15 years under the program that they had suggested we look at, which again, ties closely to the lifespan of the meters and the reading equipment. And that's just a net cost, I haven't looked at what we would be saving for, from not having to do the meter reading. I know the HGR study in 2008 did look at that, there is some additional costs from finance staff in terms of, they believe, and I actually believe them, that when we're all metered, there will be more calls coming in to finance about what's going on here, because that's, people will just, they won't be used to it. Now, it may taper off over time, but it is an area that I think there probably will be some additional demand there, assuming we're still doing the billing ourselves. Next slide. So, that kind of stands by itself. The decision to go ahead and seek a proposal to do this financing, complete package, get the whole city done, really is a decision we'd like to get some direction from the council on tonight. However, we didn't want to just stop it at that point, because there are some long-term issues that you're going to have to deal with, and we didn't want to make it sound like this is just a great thing, go for it, there are some areas we need to look at paying for it. As I mentioned, round, give or take, $400,000 a year, if we were to use, well, move back up, I'm sorry. That debt service at $400,000 a year is probably more than we could absorb long-term for 15 years without looking at our overall revenue. But there's a couple ways to do this. One is where we look at absorbing the costs in the water utility, where we use the meter reserve we have now, that $1.7 million, which would effectively pay that debt service for the first four years, and then, look at our utility reserves and the future utility revenue. The other approach would be to go ahead and impose a new meter charge. Again, those folks who have paid for meters since 92, or 1990 actually, would not be charged, but we would, we would charge the folks who have not paid for a meter. And that's, that's, that's option two, basically, is either we absorb it under option one, or we charge somebody under option two. But again, we're not, we're not going to need to decide that right away, but it is something I want to leave you with, that that needs to be dealt with. The other point was that charging somebody specific like this does require a separate Prop 218 process. I know they went through this with Lodi after I left, where they had decided to charge $300 for the meter, and they did a Prop 218 majority protest process on just those parcels. So, it's separate from what we might do if we have to adjust the rates for other reasons. Next slide. You're getting really good at this, thanks. So, some of the details of option one, again, where we absorb the costs, I know there's a concern that this is not equitable, that, hey, I paid for my meter, those folks who were here before should pay for theirs too. And from an equity standpoint, you know, I said, I used the word elusive, there really is no long-term consistencies. People who paid for a meter in 1990 paid 200 bucks, anybody putting one now is paying a lot more than that, not just because of the meter costs, you know, prices have gone up, which they haven't actually gone up all that much, but it's all that reading equipment that is a little more expensive upfront, but of course, it saves us operating costs. So, there's been, you know, differing amounts paid for meters in that, since that 1990 timeframe. And again, as I mentioned before, in 2004, we started to actually have people just go ahead and put the doggone thing in. So, there's several hundred meters out there now on homes that are already in place and paying metered rates. But the biggest thing, I think, in terms of this equity issue is that, you know, new development, however you want to define that, is constantly doing things that people 30, 50, 100 years ago didn't have to do. The biggest ones are, of course, like impact fees. I mean, impact fees didn't even exist before the 1990s. So, it's just, you know, life's not always fair, and that's just something you have to consider. The other question that always gets asked, well, what are the other folks doing? So, I did kind of a quick little survey, I actually, there were 10 that I looked up, not, sorry, I had nine there, I had one on my other side of my note sheet when I put this presentation together. Two, Lodi and Roseville are actually charging individual customers. Roseville, as I mentioned before, was under a bureau contract, so they started their program quite a few years ago, and Lodi is just right in the middle of it's right now. There were seven, actually eight, where they're just doing it through their rate structure. It's another capital improvement, just like everything else. When it's time to replace a water main because it's old, we don't charge the folks on that block, it's just something that's done as part of the water utility. And because a lot of the cost involved in putting these meters is upgrading the basic infrastructure for the, for the service, that really, the service is kind of the city's up to the meter, and a lot of folks, I know in Lodi was a big deal, where there was one council member who was just adamant that we shouldn't be charging the customers individually for upgrading that service just because it happened to be old. We had raised rates years before to improve infrastructure, and this was infrastructure, so, which is why they went back to discharging the 300 bucks for the meter. So, all these cities, and most of these were actually listed, when the bill was passed in 2004, there were a number of cities that were identified in the Senate Committee report as to who this might affect. So, I did chase all them down, and they say, they're all using their rates, and they were hoping to get grant money at the time. I know Sacramento particularly scored pretty big on the ERA grants that happened a few years ago, they put quite a bit of money into their meter program, but I think most of them probably had to do it themselves. And then, of course, there's consistency with past GALT practice, where, as I mentioned before, we put all the commercial meters in without charging the existing customers. So, I think there's, if that's an option the council wants to pursue, you've got plenty of support for doing that. The other option to go ahead is to go ahead and charge, as I mentioned before, there is additional administrative costs in doing that, because you're going to have to make sure that you send out notices to those individual customers, and make sure you know who they are. The best time to do that is after you get them going, you'll have an audit I mentioned earlier, where you'll know exactly what parcels these things are on, and it's all going to be in a good database that they can query and do all those great things you do with databases. So, part of it, you'll get through the system anyway, but going through the process, again, a 218 process on those affected parcels, and then, what do you want to charge? I mentioned before the Lodi experience, they were looking at charging all the costs of upgrading the service, they later backed off on that and decided just to charge a typical amount for a meter, that's $300 that I mentioned, and then, the utility, the city is absorbing the other, the rest of the costs for service upgrades. Roseville did a little bit differently, they came up with two different rates, and they had a meter-ready rate and a full retrofit rate, they were looking at around, sorry, my notes here, they were charging $7.20 a month for 10 years for those folks who needed the full upgrade, you know, $1.58 a month for 10 years for the folks who only needed a meter. The, oops, go back for a second, sorry. Lodi did, by the way, in addition to having the flat charge, they offered a payment plan for over three years, and I don't know what the rate they were doing, but it was, that was one of their choices. So, again, if you really feel that this issue, you all, we want to charge the older customers for that, you can do that as well. But again, it doesn't need to be decided right now, so you've really got those two choices. And I think, really, to me, one of the things that would really be useful is to go, you get the meters in, use that reserve fund that you have to cover that debt service for a couple of years, you get the meters, you'll have then full data to look at what your rates are going to be. We've done some real, quick back-of-the-envelope calculations that if, if all the residential customers, on the average, use 20 units a month, we will break even in terms of revenue. That was about the number that HGR came up with when they did their study, and look, you know, based on this as being a typical number, it'll work out, you don't really need to change your rates a whole lot. If people use a lot less water, we're going to need to adjust rates to account for that, and I'll talk about that in a minute as well. If they use a lot more water and are paying more, we will, maybe we won't need to do that. But it's close enough that we could go forward, given the fact that we have this reserve, we could go forward without making a decision about whether we want to go through that 218 process and charge individuals or not. Mentioned rate structure, again, these are policy considerations for the future. Typically, metered rates, well, I just thought, everybody metered rates has a fixed charge, and then a commodity charge for the actual amount of water that you use. The old issue about, you heard years ago during various droughts, that, oh, all the water utilities were losing money because people were using less water, so they were charging less. One of the ways you help, we got to raise the rates because of that, one of the ways you help avoid that is this fixed charge needs to be a reasonable percentage of your overall revenue. Right now, GALT's is less than 10%, I think, of your water, such a revenue is due to that fixed charge, based on the state of the art that I've read, and particularly with the state guidelines, or the, actually, it's the Urban Water Conservation Council, which is the Association of Water Utilities, their recommendations are that that be up at around 30%. The, there are other things you can do with encouraging conservation, with your rate structure, which you don't have right now, is tiered consumption rates right now, again, there's a small charge for having a meter sit there, and then, everything else is in the commodity charge. You could, regardless of how much you use, again, the state of the art is to have a tiered rate, whereas, for the real, real high users, which is a minority of the population, but they use a lot of water, which puts a bigger demand on the system, you can actually structure your rates to make that higher tier at a higher rate, which is exactly what your smud bill is like, I'm sure, and they have tiered rates. Another thing that's getting kind of new now, is, or is new, is, I heard about, I haven't actually dealt with this yet, but there's a low-usage credit, whereas, it's almost like an inverse, if you use a very, very small amount of water, maybe you're on vacation that month or whatever, you actually get a little credit back on your bill. That, I think, is worth pursuing. Other questions about, you know, policy issues, it's about phasing in the meter charges, the bill, the 2004 bill allows you to have up to a year of a grace period where you could do a comparison billing, which we're not set up to do right now, so that would take some effort to set up to be able to do that, but it is a consideration you may want to look at, so people have extended amount of time to, you know, see what I would be paying if I was on a metered rate, sort of thing. Of course, again, a lot of folks who would be paying less, they're going to say, well, charge me now that way, you know, don't. So, you've got to figure that sort of thing out. And then, or you could have this grace period, even where you start it, where you could just let them know what the consumption is, and don't do the comparison thing. So, in a nutshell, I took a five-page staff report and filled it down to nine slides, so I'm sure you may have some questions, but again, we're asking each direct staff to pursue this alternate approach, where we do the financing and everything, and do the whole city. I really do think it's what GALT needs. The fact that we really don't have anything in place to looking forward to getting that phase two done really concerns me, that we'll be sitting here 10 years from now, having the same discussion about, well, how are we going to do these last bit? And it may not be to our advantage at that point, so we got to do it while the getting's[1576.23] good. Thank you.
Ready for public comment? Mr. Walters?
Rick Walters, I live in the city of GALT, thank you, council. Richard, that was very nice, thank you very much. Hate to see you leave, we've had a few words back and forth, but thank you very much for that, that was very good. My input on this is that I think we ought to go with phase one right off the bat, because it's ready to go. It's a meter that's sitting there with a stub in it, and you take the stub out, put the water meter in, and you're done. It's a real quick fix. Do you agree with that, Richard?
Well, actually, I think in reading the HDR report, the older phase one meters are not going to be just ready to go, there's going to be some modifications to the service. So, it's certainly easier than phase two, I would agree with that.
Right. Phase one is, if we're in agreeance, it's just a stub pipe that's taken out, the water meter and backflow are put in, it's all pre-fitted. That's why you can do the whole city in six months, but the phase one, you can do sooner than that. Phase one is about thirty-two hundred meters, I believe, and it's about one point eight million dollars that we have in the bank. I don't know, how much did you spend for the HDR report, Jason, do you remember?
I don't recall.
A hundred and fifty thousand or something? I don't, something like that. But my recommendation is to this council, do phase one, then you know where you're at. That's the easy part of it. You get that done, and then you work on the rest of it. That's my recommendation to council. The cost for phase one, they've already paid their fees. Now, say they only paid a hundred, a hundred and fifty, or two hundred dollars twenty years ago. You've been sitting on their money for twenty years. So, that's enjoyed tax increases, right? Am I right on that? So, if you figure it out, one point eight million divided by, say, thirty-six hundred customers, which is half of that, it amounts to about five hundred dollars that they have. So, that's a consideration also. They shouldn't have to pay for anything excluding the fixed charge. I think the fixed charge is the proper way to go. It's red, just like the smud and PGU bill, so that's the proper way to do it. But, like I said, my recommendation to you is phase one, get that done, get all that done, because that's the easy part of it. And then go into the properties that need extra work done to it. That's the smart way to do it. Thank you.
Any other speaker sheets? There are no additional speakers. Okay. Then I would go to the staff and ask if you have questions or comments. That's quite a long report, but the main thought that I got was, we need to get started on it. And the sooner the better.
I think the economy's of scale of doing the whole city at once would be the best for the city in the long run. Going through this twice, and the overhead associated with having consultants help the city do this and do all the things that we typically do, as opposed to the approach of, again, a design-build type process along with the financing, would, you'd go through the pain once, it's done, and you have the benefits that I described. Everybody's on the same basis, instead of dividing the community with those who have meters and those who don't. Just, I just don't think it's the appropriate way to go.
But I did hear that we need to start doing something immediately.
Well, you're already two years behind on phase one. And we actually submitted a SRF application for the water system, for some, we worked on one of the wells, and I'm just waiting for that letter to come back and say, by the way, how are you compliance with the, say, well, or not.
Councilman Singleton, any questions? At this time? Vice Mayor?
Where's phase one and where's phase two? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Phase one, and I didn't bring one of the maps, we do have a map of all the new services since nineteen ninety-two. Generally, it's in the northeast area and the west side of town where the new subdivisions are.
Yeah, anything built since nineteen ninety is going to be phase one. So, it's both sides. Yeah, the west side and northeast side and the south side, and generally, the very core of the city is going to be the older homes and things.
If we were to follow it very strictly, there are actually subdivisions where there would be neighborhoods where one, some houses will be metered and some wouldn't, right next to each other. It's not like it's just, you know, groups. It's scattered because of that timeframe that happened back in the nineties when there was development going on.
Okay. Councilman Cruz?
I'm just kind of curious, you're saying you can get both phases done in six months' time?
Yeah, I think so.
You're just talking about construction.
Construction portion.
Yeah. This is not rocket science construction, I mean, it's pretty straightforward stuff.
I'm all for it, if you can get it done in six months, that'd be great.
Looking at the end of twenty thirteen.
Yeah, I'm going to all wrap up.
It's going to take a while to develop the RFP, get the proposals, evaluate everything, get the, so by the time you're done. And then, like Richard said, you're not going to, you're going to put the meters in, and then you're probably going to have a period of time where you're going to start doing some sample billing, so people can kind of see what their meters run in and see what the sample bills would be. Okay, if you were on a meter, here's what your bill would be, give them time to adjust. You know, if they're really a high user, they can put in some low-flow toilets or showerheads or whatever they want to do to cut down their costs, and give them time to adjust to that before you start.
But the meters is the hard part. Once that's done, we're home free.
Actually, I don't know, I didn't hear you say the meters were the hard part, it was more deciding on how you're going to read the meters.
Well, I mean, as far as the physical installation goes, it happens together. I mean, they put the meter in, they hook up the radio to it, and off you go. It's all that other peripheral stuff.
Yeah, this isn't a very complicated construction project, it's really deciding how you're going to finance it, how you're going to phase it. Those kinds of decisions are the important ones. And policy decisions for the council, you know, we're asking you to make one decision tonight, which is either go, just continue with just doing phase one, or go forward with the comprehensive approach and do phase one and phase two altogether at the same time. And then, as we move forward, we get the bids back, then we'll be bringing back forward more decisions about, okay, how are we going to finance this and so forth. Kind of outlining for you some of the issues that we see, but we don't need answers on everything tonight, really just asking for that one answer tonight. But if there's any comments or feedback you want to make on any other components, you're certainly welcome to make them tonight, but we don't need those responses.
Councilman Shelton?
Well, I believe what staff is telling us, I mean, we need the direct staff to come back with the whole program. I mean, it says right here, planning, implementing, and financing, installation of the water meter, retrofits for the entire city. It's something the city's been working on since nineteen ninety-two. It seems like we get almost right there, and for whatever reason, it's not been completed. And I know it was a long, long process, you know, when it was first thought of to do, but that's my thoughts.
Was that a motion?
I don't know if you have heard some comments from everyone, if not.
I did ask one thing, I wanted to comment about when you're done.
Will you go ahead?
As far as the rate structure, we're going to see how you're going to charge per unit and that kind of deal, because that concerns me also. Because you could have a big family that uses a lot of water, because they have eight kids and a small home, you know, so I would be interested to know the rate structure that we're going to use, if we're going to use the units and.
It doesn't matter what size home you have, how many kids you have, it all matters how much water you use.
Right, right.
So, is it going to be a meter, the water's going to flow through it, and there's going to be a base charge, just like if you look at your smud bill, there's a kind of set fee that covers your general overhead. And Richard said the recommendation is kind of thirty percent of your total revenue, and then everything else is consumption-based, so the more you use, and it's, you're most likely tiered in the same way as smud. If you're first tier, you use a relatively low amount, your per, you know, cubic meter is going to be pretty low. The more you use, you're going to start getting much higher rates.
Well, what brings up another deal is that I.
We're not setting those rates tonight, that's something we'll do later.
I understand, I would be interested in that, because I wanted to see what the structure is going to be. Because at that point, you know, we may start getting people to say, hey, I can't afford the water, so we're going to stop watering their lawns, and then our city's going to start looking like garbage, and I don't want to see that. So, I just want to see, as compared to what we do now, how's it going to compare? You know, on an average, I'll say an average, because I know it can vary from, you know, how many people are in the home and how big the home is.
Absolutely. Those are all the considerations we do when we develop. What we'll likely have to do is bring somebody in to help us take a look at setting up that rate structure, similar to what we did with HDR, they had some recommendations there, and then we'll bring some recommendations back to council as far as setting up the exact charges on those. And what you try to aim for is so the average water user now is not going to have any change in their, in their, the amount that they're paying.
Unless it's lower, and that's what I was looking at.
If they're using less, they have the potential to save a little bit of money. If they're using more, then they're going to pay more. And so, you know, until we get there, we won't know, and we actually start measuring what the water usage is.
I just want to make the point that.
That's kind of the theory behind it.
That's exactly what I want to be looking at, because we certainly don't want our citizens to have sticker shock, so to speak, when these are installed and used.
And that's the theory behind giving them a little bit of a grace period.
Right, right.
See, well, maybe I am, you know, watering too much.
Right, right.
I'm watering my lawn for an hour, and all the water's going down the storm drain, so maybe I can down that back a little bit.
I should point out that there are several hundred homes in GALT paying metered rates right now.
Yes, I know.
And I'm not aware that there's been an issue with, you know, folks letting their lawn die and stuff like that because of the water rates. So, I don't think it's going to be as much of an issue as we're concerned.
Which is something I was going to take into consideration, so.
Well, that would be something you'd bring back to us, too, so.
Sure.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Do you want to read the recommended action on this, or what we're asked to do?
Provide direction to staff to issue a request for proposals for planning, implementing, and financing installation of water meter retrofits for the entire city.
Okay, now you've heard the recommended action, are you ready to act on this, or are there additional questions?
My pre-motion still stands.
So, your pre-motion was made?
I'll call it a pre-motion. Now, I'll call it a motion.
And that motion was the recommended action?
Yes.
Okay, just to be sure that we're all on the same page.
Which would include what Councilman Singleton brought up. City manager already said that would be part of the proposal to let us know what the fees are. Examples.
Okay. And we have a second from Vice Mayor Powers. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers? Hi. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously, and Mr. Prima, thank you so much for that report, giving us a new sense of urgency to get this taken care of. And we will certainly miss you and appreciate all you've done.
You've done a great job, thank you. Thanks.
Shall we give him a hand of applause?
Now you're red.
Okay, so at this time, we're ready to adjourn from the regular meeting to the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. So, we are now open, and roll call, please.
Board members, Powers? Here. Singleton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
King?
Here.
Public comments?
I have no speaker sheets.
Consent items? We have no consent items. We'll go to departmental then.
We have one item, resolution of the successor agency to the former GALT redevelopment agency adopting procedures and ratifying prior actions.
Good evening again, board members. AB fourteen eighty-four has been mentioned several times this evening, and one of the changes that was contained in AB fourteen eighty-four was to declare that the successor agency, which has been in existence since February one of this year under the umbrella of the city, is now deemed by this new law to be a separate legal entity. And as a separate legal entity, the successor agency is required to appoint officers and take several other procedural steps to form itself as a new legal entity. So, the adopt, the attached resolution satisfies those requirements. It does items such as adopt the bylaws of the GALT City Council as the bylaws of the successor agency, appoints the mayor as the chairperson of the agency, and the vice mayor as the vice chairperson, designates the GALT Herald as the newspaper of general circulation, adopts the Conflict of Interest Code, sequel guidelines, directs the clerk to file a statement of organization. And since we have been operating since February one, it also ratifies all prior actions of the successor agency that have been taken since February one of this year. So, this procedural and housekeeping resolution is presented for action this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, pardon? What we're trying to do here? Okay. Would you read the recommended action one more time?
Adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the former GALT redevelopment agency adopting procedures and ratifying prior actions.
You've heard the recommended action, was there any further discussion or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously. We will now adjourn from the successor agency and reconvene to the regular GALT City Council with the city clerk's report.
Just a few reminders, tomorrow's National Night Out, everyone has their emails on time, dates, and places. The community should, I think it was in the newspaper. If you need any information, you certainly can call the city clerk's office. August eighth is the Parks and Rec, oh, yeah, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at seven PM in the council chambers. The planning commission has been canceled, it was scheduled for August ninth. On August thirteenth, we have a special GALT youth committee meeting at six PM in the council chambers. On August sixteenth, there's a beautification committee meeting at three PM in the city hall community room, and that takes us back to our next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Report by staff or comments by staff?
Just a comment, that we had a really successful strategic planning workshop with the council and staff, more of a report to the community. That information's up on the website now, so you can go and take a look to see what kind of outcomes came out of that meeting. We'll be reporting, the mayor reported the next city council meeting, some of the goals and objectives that came out of that meeting, but it was a big success. Also, there's a lot of work going on around town, in addition to the interchange project, Elm Street is undertaking, undergoing an overlay project that's going well, and then we have a number of slurry seal road projects throughout the city, both on the west side and the east side. You'll see a number of grindings and other things taking place, and those will be slurry sealed over the next several weeks. So, a lot of roadwork going on in the community, but much needed, and that's it.
Any other report from the staff or comments from the staff? Then we will go to comments for the council, and we'll start with Councilman Singleton.
I'm just looking forward to follow us up tomorrow night for our National Night Out.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Ditto. Ditto, huh? Councilman Shelton?
Yeah, the same, National Night Out, it's great. I don't know, did you name the name of the parks? I just want to restate it. It's Metalview Park, Smud Park, Community Park. It's going to be a great time, and if you've not gone to one of them, I hope everyone in the community has the opportunity just to go say hi. You're going to have a police department, fire department, I believe all the council members will be going different directions, and it's an opportunity to, if you're interested in the neighborhood watch, you're going to see what happens to all of their functions.
Free hot dogs?
Free hot dogs.
Doggone machine?
That's right.
What time?
You have the food menu. I want to hear more about the food.
Come on out, it's going to be a great time.
Yeah.
Meet your neighbors. I think it's different times depending on the park.
I think they all start around six and go until about eight-thirty PM. I'm reading a copy of an email, so we have a function where we're doing the parade, different routing, yeah. Other than that, everyone have a great week.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz, on your mind?
Just the same thing, going to enjoy National Night Out. One last thing before he gets away from us, Richard. Any more update on our turntable out there? You know I was going to hit you up on it. But that's all I've got.
Okay. I'm going to very briefly report on the last SAACOG meeting. They presented for public release, which I will file with the city clerk, the regional housing needs plan. And it includes the formula that they have come up with to decide how many income or low-income and low-low-income housing we are expected to not build, but to zone for. And it's this thick.
It's like our packet's a little small.
So, if anyone wants to go through this, it explains the different formulas that they looked at and the one they decided on to tell or to direct us on our zoning for new housing, not building but new housing. So, I will file that. And also, at the same time, we received a letter, which I will leave with the city clerk as well, from Supervisor Don Natoli, and it's the Sacramento County's Opposition to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. It's quite lengthy, so I won't read it to everybody, but again, it's available, and it is signed by all of the supervisors, county supervisors. And the other thing that came up with, there was a report on the Habitat Conservation Plan. They have a real concern with this Bay Delta Conversation Conservation Plan, because there's only so much land that can be mitigated, and they're looking at wanting to mitigate land. Habitat Conservation Plan is based on mitigation. The difference is, the Habitat is county, the other one is much higher authority, and they're looking at using eminent domain. So, SAACOG has some real concerns about what's going to happen to our Habitat Conservation Plan, which we have been trying to get completed for, how many years?
Too many.
Too many. So, that was kind of a hot issue. The other thing that's still in discussion is the requirement of thirty units to the acre, which might work well in some of the cities. It's not going to seem to be so practical or feasible for towns like GALT. At this point, that's where we're at. The SAACOG staff is trying to see what they can do to make some changes there. So, that's SAACOG. And in addition to that, our new, I'm proud to announce, our new Highway ninety-nine express bus will start. It's really designed to help our students get from GALT to Consumis River College. And the fee one way is a dollar fifty for a student. That's exceptional. In the past, our students that are our young people, our citizens, have had to take a bus from GALT to Elk Grove, transfer someplace in Elk Grove to another bus to get where they're going. I think this is going to be a real benefit for especially our students, but in addition to that, it'll be going down Bruceville, which will give our citizens access to Kaiser Permanence. Permanente, Methodist Hospital, any of those medical facilities. So we have the new schedules and the new rates. I'm anxious to get the word out to everybody so we can, again, reach our Fairbox requirements, so we can keep the service going without the city having to pick up the bill. But I think more than that, it's just gonna be a great service for the community. And reporting on our wonderful commuter bus, in the month of May, the report was five-hundred and sixty-seven passengers, in the month of June, nine-hundred and forty-eight passengers. And SAICOG was instrumental in getting this started, and they are just not believing this is happening. So that's, that's pretty exciting for us. I think I've exhausted all my information, so unless anyone has any other comments, we will adjourn the meeting at eleven minutes after nine o'clock.
What? New years?
Did you hear?
Oh. Oh, what's up with that?
I know, but I didn't know I'm gonna do this to help.
That's what I went for.
I just don't know. I did not get the email.
Um, do we mean that we're in tomorrow? Do we?
Yeah.
I have, uh, I'm actually writing, uh, Jack Porter.
I'm probably, I'm probably gonna go before you.
I'm online, so what do we do?
I'll call somebody tomorrow.